All right, there we are. Good evening, everyone. Tonight's January eleventh and I will call the Town of Gray Planning Board meeting to order. So, first up is roll call. Tamara?
Pres-.
President.
Linda?
President.
And Genya?
Present.
And I'm Dan Cobb also here, so that's all of us. So, actually, we have something to add, Kristen, which is we need to do our officer elections since it's January.
Oh, okay.
So, I was gonna add that first, so we can get that out of the way, if everyone is amenable to that. So, I guess we need to do nominations for Chair.
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to nominate you for Chair and Tamara for Vice Chair. I think she'd do a fabulous job.
Okay. Okay. Do you wanna do them together? We can do that.
Can we do them together?
Sure.
A slate of officers.
We can do a slate. Are there?
Okay, I'm second to you.
Well, hold on. Are there? I'll at least ask, are there any other nominations? Okay, no other nominations, so all in favor? It's four or nothing, so we'll keep things as they are. Thank you for your votes of confidence in our leadership. Right, minutes approval. So, minutes of the December fourteenth meeting. Did anyone have any comments or corrections to that? I didn't have anything either, so is there a motion to approve the minutes as issued?
I move we approve the minutes as issued.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? It's four or nothing. Okay. Information exchange. Kristen has at least a staff review committee that she can update us on.
Sure, just a couple items. So, the Staff Review Committee met on December eighteen to do a review of a minor site plan amendment for Luna Island LLC regarding the change of use at the Allstate Building off of Portland Road, becoming a modular home sales facility. So, there'll be three modular homes, uh, model homes on the site for people to look at, and then the office. So, it's a retail trade use on that site, and that was approved. The only other info exchange at this point, we had talked about having a workshop with the Open Space Committee, and that looks like it'll probably be lined up for the next meeting, so six o'clock, February eighth, if that works for the board.
I think so.
Oh, February eighth is a Thursday.
Yeah, it'll be right before the reg- irregular meeting. Unless we need to reschedule the regular meeting, which we also consider.
Um, I just realized that I scheduled myself in a conflict for that. Is there an option for folks to reschedule that meeting? I don't know. I'm, this is, it would be, I mean, we could, fortunately, we have a core without me, so.
Well, we could, right, I was gonna say, I wouldn't really, yeah, I mean, I don't think we need to reschedule a planning board meeting as long as there's still three of us, I wouldn't.
Uh. Yeah, well, thank goodness, we can do that.
Do that.
Um, I just. But I do have a work option that I could go to, but, um, wow. Schedule. I really wanna go to that Open Space Committee.
We have time to move the date if you don't want to.
Well, that's, I mean, the, yeah, I was gonna say, the, this, we don't have to have the open space workshop at the next, and there's no particular urgency. It would be a good thing to do, but there's not like a deadline about it. So, we could do it before the March meeting.
I might be able to come to the Open Space and still meet my other commitments later. Don't work around me. I'll come as I can, despite what's around my.
Okay. Okay.
And I was on the fence about my work things, so it's.
So, it stays February or six o'clock.
Yeah. Good. It'll be fine, although, March, I definitely, I'm definitely traveling for work on our March meeting date.
You wanna talk about rescheduling March now?
Uh, I don't think we need to yet, right, 'cause we've still got three, so.
Yeah, so, still not, none of my stuff, I mean, remember, boy, there we go. Okay, good.
Right. Um, so, will you, is that confirmed, six P M. as of now then, or do you, is, do you need to do anything?
Uh, I was putting it out there to Open Space and to you guys to see if that works.
Okay, so, will you send?
I typically, I've been told, you prefer to do workshops prior to the same night.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be fast.
As planning board, so if that works, then.
Like, so I guess my question is, will you confirm it by email, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, the only thing I was waiting on is to see if you have a really hefty agenda.
Oh, that's a good point.
Then, we typically don't put a workshop before that, it's just too much, but it's not shaping up to be, so.
Yeah. Okay, okay. All right, and the other information? Um, I had one thing for the board. I got a couple emails over the past month from Mister Chapman, and it was regarding a project that was in front of us several months ago. It was the, um, the self-storage place on Lewiston Road. And there was, without getting into the gory details of it, there was an issue where some information, as I understand it, was omitted to us, and the project was approved, and it was built with, without us knowing about a, um, a right-of-way over part of it. And the, um, again, this is, as I understand it, 'cause it was quite complicated. The impervious, uh, surface was built up above a percentage, which then precluded the, uh, person that held the right-of-way from doing something with it. It turned into a big problem. I'll kinda leave it at that, I guess. And they ended up kinda having a pretty difficult experience. In the end, they went to the Z B A and got it addressed through a variance that was granted by them. I guess what I wanted to cover is, you know, once we approve something, it's out of our hands, like, so, there was some, I think, questions around that. Like, I got some, a couple phone calls from people as well, saying, hey, did you know this happened? But there's really nothing that, once we approve a project, it goes into the next phase, which is town and code enforcement, and, and it's not really a planning board issue to deal with, but I did think, since at least both of you were there, you would wanna be aware of it, and I guess I would put it out to either, either Dan or Kristen, if you wanted to add anything. Like, I don't know if there's anything, any process that can be put in place that would help prevent something like that from happening again, or if it was such a one-off that, um, it's not likely, but if you had anything you wanted to add, it, put it out there.
Yeah, I mean, the, when a project comes before the planning board, you're depending on the applicant to present you with accurate information, and that's what you base your decisions off of. So, it's, if there's inaccurate information that you end up basing your decision off of, it's not the fault of the planning board, it's, that's, it's part of the process. So, there, there could potentially be, and maybe, that probably would be a council question about changing processes or adding levels of review, but right now, it's not a level of review, like deed research and things like that, or not a level of review that we do for applicants on town, taxpayer dime, uh, with staff. So, that's, that's one of the things that certainly could be up for discussion, if it's something that you wanna do. Um, when we have, uh, something that comes up as a potential violation, it is, as you said, reviewed by codes, and if it's something that needs to come back to the board, um, we would bring it back.
Yeah.
I have a clarifying question. Is this right-of-way, it must've been for an abutter, so they would've been noticed of the project, right? So, did they have an opportunity to, or?
Uh, I, I don't wanna get it wrong, so I'm not gonna say, there were dozens of emails, like, that I got while I was traveling.
Oh, okay. Oh. Oh.
And, yeah, it was a pretty complex thing that they had to untangle.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
They went through, unfortunately, quite a bit of expense, and in the end, as I understand it, they went to the Z B A, and the Z B A got them where they needed to be, so they at least didn't need to go further, like, through the court system and things like that. But it was still, um, you know, the email I got, it was quite expensive, like, you know, five-figure type of costs to get it addressed, so. Anyways, they were obviously unhappy about the situation, and you can't blame them, for sure. So, uh, just, you know, wanted to cover it because I got the emails, and it was, it was a big topic at at least one or maybe two Z B A meetings, I'm not sure, so.
Unfortunately.
I don't know, if you have anything to add, Dan, or not?
Just really quickly, there were some verbal agreements, which are always a slippery slope, that were part of the problem, I believe. The other piece is, it becomes an enforcement issue, and that always becomes, to some extent, a conversation about cost and ultimate impact, and those pieces. The only thing from a process standpoint I can think of is where, when you have a subdivision, you have a fairly detailed list, checklist of things that you're going to review, that, that presenter has to bring to you. You know, perhaps it's worth thinking, is there a short, you know, shortened version of that that you should just quickly review for all things, that might include something like, you know, a right-of-way or something like that? But, you know, that's just throwing out blue-sky ideas for you to think about if that would be useful. But I think you're right, fortunately, I mean, this is the first time something like this has blown up in my experience, which isn't super long, but it's not a everyday occurrence. From an information exchange piece, the only part I have is the, do we need to make some ordinance changes around small details like streetlights at the end of developments, and some of the other things that you're finding that you get waivers for more frequently? That's, that's kind of an aside, too, but I think, um, that's the communication piece back to the council.
Right. Yeah, I guess, I mean, the only other thing I would say on that topic is it's, it's too bad that it was so difficult for them to untangle. I feel like it should've or could've been easier in some way. I don't know what that way is, but when, you know, if you look at it from the, from the abutters' perspective, they were sort of inadvertently encumbered or wronged, or whatever you wanna call it, and then it took a lot of effort on their part to, through no fault of their own, to be able to do what they needed to do, and they also had to do what they could've done more quickly than they wanted to do it, because since they got a variance, they had a timeline associated with doing something. So, what I think they really wanted to do was something far in the future and have that right. But since they, since the most cost-effective and quickest way to resolve it was through the Z B A, then that put a timeline on what they wanted to do, so then they had to spend even more money to put infrastructure in, because they had a, you know, the one-year or whatever it is timeline. So, it was just like, I don't have an answer. It just seems like, I don't, you know, it seems like there could've been an even better way to resolve that for them, but I don't know.
Well, I don't think it was the towns issue to some extent.
Yeah.
That was part of, I think, what complicated, the parties were looking for the town to play a role to solve it, but it really wasn't an issue that involved the town.
Right.
It was complicated by the fact that they'd maxed out the impervious surface, so there was this whole other issue. You know, they were in a butter, whether they, you know, you can only hope that they got the notice they were supposed to get. We don't usually get complaints from the abutters that they haven't received notice, so, um, I think it was kind of a perfect storm, unfortunately, of circumstances.
So, anyways, there's that. Um, that's all I had. Anything else? All right, let's continue. We've got two items of continued business. So, first up is Campbell Acres Amendment Final Plan Review. This is a request by McDonald Brothers Custom Builders LLC, represented by D M Roma Consulting Engineers, for planning board final plan review of a proposal to create three lots in the Campbell Acres subdivision on the seven point one-two plus or minus parcel off Jenny Drive, map fifty-six, lot seventeen twenty-eight oh three, in the Rural Residential and Agricultural Zoning District. This proposal is subject to major subdivision review.
Welcome, sir. Uh, my name's J P Conley. I work for D M Roma Consulting Engineers, and I'm here representing the McDonald Brothers Custom Builders. So, at the last meeting, um, I think we were addressing just a few last items and particular, um, issues related to stormwater, and, um.
Uh, J, before you go any further, we do need to, I remember, we need to vote to take this off the table, so, just do that. That's my, my bad, but we'll do that first, so, we ta- we had tabled this at the last, um, meeting. So, if someone wants to make a motion to take it off the table and consider it, that'd be great.
Yes, Chair, I'd like to move to take the Campbell Acres subdivision amendment final plan review off the table, so we can address it tonight.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor? It's four or nothing. Welcome back. Sorry about that.
Not at all, not at all. So, um, we reached out to town staff, as well as, um, we had a conversation with the town peer review engineer. And I think, based on that conversation and in your memo, the comments came back that, um, they were generally agreeable to, um, the waiver, or, or what we were doing with our stormwater. It, we went through options, discussed them, um, and, and none of them were really great for the project. So, um, I believe at this point, um, we, we need your waiver vote, and, um, if there's any other questions or any concerns with the project, we can go through them at this point. And I don't really wanna take up more time than I do here tonight.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I don't, I don't think you need to.
Okay.
Um, thank you. So, yeah, so, in front of us tonight, this is basically the last thing, is, is the waiver, and then, um, assuming we grant the waiver final approval. So, I mean, to me, I think at this point, you guys have done your, your due diligence. You know, that's what we sent you back with last time, was to do that really final piece of homework and, and make sure there's nothing else that could be done, and get the, uh, input from the town engineer. So, at this point, I, I mean, I'm in favor of the waiver. I think it's better where you'd end it up than doing something that meets the ordinance to the latter, but uses up more of the buffer and everything else, so to me, I'm good with it. Sure, absolutely.
Um, my, these stormwater events that we just seem to have, like, every single day, make me pause. I understand the topo and issues here. My question is, if one of the subdi- if one of the developed duplexes were less developed, say, for example, if one of them was a single family, would that matter? Or is it the location of the road that is just gonna cause a problem no matter what? Because that seems important to me, given especially all the neighbors coming out, and this is densely developed, which I'm fine with, but I don't want to have the density of development triggering the waiver, I guess, is my question.
Good question.
Yep, um, the, the issue is, is the, the, about eighty to a hundred and twenty feet of the initial part of the road coming up from Jenny Drive. In fact, if we were to reduce the amount of development, um, our stormwater treatment numbers would actually go down. But, um, to, and, and quite frankly, it would have no impact to where the water that we are concerned with, the stormwater flow, which is out at Jenny Drive.
Correct.
Unfortunately, there's not a lot we can do in that location. We, you know, we, we looked at options to, you know, use the buffer area for a detention pond.
Right.
Um, we looked at a few other options as well, and it just did not pan out for us. We also did go out in one of those storm events, and the fortunate side of this project is that it is looking right at the high point of Jenny Drive. So, the, the contributing watershed going to it is, is limited to essentially, it, it starts just at our property. I mean, it doesn't even extend to the, the westerly extent of our property, or easterly extent of our property. So, the reality is, um, we didn't see, in the last rain event where we had flooding everywhere, the mountains got blown up, and, you know, roads were washed out, um, there really wasn't even much water in the swale at all. And I, we can provide photos if you're interested in those, but, um.
The stuff, there was some in the package.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, and, so that, you can see that the, the, the swale was capable of handling that event. Handling, um, in fact, if you, if you, I mean, I can't zoom in on those photos, but in a few of the photos, you can actually see the downstream culvert. And, um, there's more than, I'd say, three-quarter of the, um, you know, uh, freeboard in that, in that culvert. So, there's, should be plenty of hydraulic capacity between the swale and the culvert to handle any, you know, larger storm events even. But unfortunately, reducing the development, it would really only hurt our numbers. It, it may improve the numbers leaving the site, but it probably wouldn't, because the pond, um, is handling the majority of that. So, if we reduce the development of this, the lots, um, that, all the lots go to the treatment pond. So, it's, it's just road and, you know, so coming up that hill is our, our precipice, so.
That is very helpful. That was very helpful to me. Thank you.
Yep, any other questions?
So, I guess the only other question I have is just the concern that was raised about the icing, right, where the road intersects with Jenny Drive, and just thinking about the safety of that, and is there, so there's just nothing that can be done, just because of the steepness and how it all intersects?
Well, reality is, I, I think what I envisioned when I read that comment was, uh, it, it's really a snow maintenance issue. As you know, when you plow a gravel road or a dirt road that doesn't have curbing, um, the snowbanks end up acting as curb. So, in that case, um, I think what, um, the peer reviewer was looking for was some sort of, um, response in terms of how are you gonna address that? Well, the issue would be, you know, a rain event after a snow event, where we have large snowbanks. And, um, it would really comes down to how we plow our site. So, the, the town does their thing and comes through, it takes, and creates the snowbanks. As long as we push those snowbanks back and, and don't allow for basically a new curb at the edge of the flares, we'll still have the plowable water coming into the site. And as we saw in the last rain event, there isn't a lot of water contributing to that swell. So, as long as there is access into them, um, we won't have that issue where, um, there'll be a significant amount of water sheeting into the road and freezing, and then, you know, that sort of scenario. I, with the steepness of the road, I would gather they're gonna really do it, they're gonna sand the road heavily in the drive, the road going up to it, and the, and the driveways for the duplex. So, um, hopefully with that and salt and, um, you know, a good stor- you know, snowplow operation, they, they won't have an, a real issue. Um, it is very, not very common, uncommon, um, quite frankly, the, if we were to have a, a situation where the road gradient went down, we would just be putting that icing situation in a different location. It, it would naturally occur. Um, if, if we have a down gradient and an up gradient, at the low point, they're still gonna have that situation where berms could create, so.
Any other questions or comments? Anyone wanna make a motion on the waiver?
All right. Move to approve the following waivers. Following waiver for the proposal by McDonald Brothers Custom Builders LLC, represented by D M Roma Consulting Engineers, to create an additional three lots in the Campbell Acres subdivision on the seven point one-two plus or minus parcel off Jenny Drive, map fifty-six, lot seventeen dash twenty-eight dash oh three, in the Rural Residential and Agricultural Zoning District. This proposal is subject to major subdivision review. The waivers are as follows. Four hundred and one point one-three point one-two point D and four hundred and one point one-three point one-two point G, requiring a stormwater management plan that meets the requirements of D E P Chapter five hundred general standards, four hundred and one point thirteen point twelve point D, and flooding standards, four hundred and one point thirteen point twelve point G, allowing a minor deviation due to the topography of the site, restrictions on stormwater management within the buffer to Jenny Drive, and to minimize the creation of impervious area.
This is our second. Further discussion? All in favor? It's four or nothing. You've got your waiver. Okay, now, we have a draft motion for final approval. You earned yourself this year because you gave away the easy one.
Thank you. I don't need to read all of these out, though, if they say as listed in the.
So. No. Well, you do, but I've got some comments first.
Okay, oh, man.
Well, I just wanted to, so we have a placeholder. I wanted to make sure, okay, so the placeholder will be included. So, twelve, she's got it listed as a placeholder, but we just granted that. So, it's actually, my comments are actually a question, and I'm wondering about a condition, and whether it's worth talking about some type of, uh, condition related to your plowing maintenance that you talked about. Whether it's a requirement that you do something, or it could also be something around if there's a problem, what the recourse of the town is. I don't have an answer, I'm just thinking along those two lines, specific to the icing potential, like, as in, if it, you know, we could either, well, we don't have to do this, I'm just putting the idea out, but it could be something around, you know, plowing shall be done in a way that, um, doesn't cause that curbing problem, or it could be something related to, um, if there's a problem that you need to revisit something with the town.
Um, well, I can illustrate the problem, Dan, a little bit better, and maybe show you what we've, we have in, in the works as it is right now. If I can get my plan to be s- shared. I don't know how.
That's a, that's a plea for help.
Yeah. I've got a white blinking toggle. I'm not sure if it's, uh, it should be solid red, I think. I'll try pushing buttons, but. But without having to show you, I, I can speak to it. I, you may or may not remember, we had an issue with the road culvert at Jenny Drive, and we had the cover concern. So, the culvert had to come into the site a little bit. As a result of the, the culvert coming into the site and basically having a swell, uh, we put all of that area into a town easement. So, there's an easement that has, um, you know, the town has right to access, maintain, and, and do any work they want to. Again, I, I don't think, um, the McDonald Brothers would object to, you know, a operation and maintenance, uh, situation where, um, they overplow, basically plow beyond the edge of pavement and into the gravel edge, and, and essentially get that snowbank to be further back. Um, I think that could be allowed. But I don't know, um, to what extent, um, I, I don't really know whether or not a, like, an enforcement action kinda thing would be a viable option either. You know, if it became a, a routine problem, if, um, we had a condition. Um, you know, if it became a routine problem, if, um, we had a condition that would allow some sort of enforcement action to take place. But I mean, I think there's a.
Yeah, I was thinking, I was thinking more along the line of an operational kind of thing.
Yeah, I I.
I mean, I wanna keep it simple, but it seems like, you know, there's a potential for icing in the middle of a more major roadway as a result of what you're doing, so we should have some condition that highlights that as a risk and mitigates it.
Sure. I mean, I think the condition could be something that, um, the snowbanks within the town right of way and easement are, um, do not prohibit stormwater from entering the road swales. And, um, if the, in, to that effect, then it has to be an operation and maintenance thing that way. But I'm open to suggestions as well.
Yeah, something like that works. I don't know if you have.
Do you wanna say what you just?
Someone has some wording, something or.
Can he say that again?
Yeah.
I tried to write it down, but I wasn't fast enough.
Um, that the.
Snowbanks in the right of way.
So, so, snow removal and snow maintenance within the town right of way of Jenny Drive and the, um, the proposed easement, um, is to be such that snowbanks don't impede stormwater runoff from entering the road swale and prohibiting it from sheeting across Jenny Drive.
And you'll have a, this won't have an association, right? It's, or will it?
Yeah, it will.
Yeah, so it would, something like it shall be the road association's responsibility to ensure that snowbanks in the right of way don't impede stormwater flow into the swale, something like that.
And I guess my question now is, if this is a condition of approval, then the town has a right to reach out to the homeowners association if there's an issue?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's.
Well, I I'm just.
That's what's implied, but.
Okay, all right.
There's something in writing that the association will be aware of because it's part of their approval and they'll know or should know that they're responsible for it, so the town, through whatever enforcement mechanism there is, can hold them responsible.
Would, would it be suitable for this to be a note on the plan? I don't know if that triggers an enforcement action. Like, what would?
Yeah, I mean, most likely.
I'm just thinking like, snow storage is on a plan, so the way that you.
It's probably a better place for it. Wow.
Yeah, maintenance.
Yeah, typically it would be, it would be both a, I think, a condition of approval and then s- usually there are several conditions of approval that are mentioned on the vision plan as well.
On the plan.
Um, as needed. I mean, we're already gonna have, uh, notes regarding the road, which he, which he already has on there, uh, that it won't be eligible for wi- winter maintenance from the town.
Uh-huh.
So that sort of thing could be added in. There's, there's a driveway provision, number nine, that's gonna be, uh, part of it as well. So, I would think this would work as a additional note.
Point information.
Sure.
Since this road isn't eligible for winter maintenance, winter maintenance is really the thing that gives the town leverage if there's a problem. Um, so a winter maintenance road is, has the responsibility to maintain the road to a certain condition. If they don't do that, they lose that function. Where this one will never be a winter maintenance road, there really won't be that sort of,
Mm-hmm.
um, lever if you go for the town to do anything about. Not that that should change your decision, but just as a FYI.
Yeah. I get that, but if this road is leaving a frozen puddle of ice in Jenny Drive, which is a town road, then the.
It needs to be addressed. No, I think it's great, I think it's great you're doing this.
Yeah. So, it'll be an additional condition and noted on the plan. That's what we can do here. That was my only, um, addition.
No, I appreciate that. I wrote things, I wrote things down. Can, can I run this by?
Sure.
By us first, okay. Um, so, we have a new condition. I'll call it nine B. Is it, or something, um.
Probably be better to make it itself.
Or a new, a new number?
Yeah, it's a number.
Number, should it be number thirteen?
Well, the conditions of this one are letters.
The conditions are A, B, C, D, E, so this will be F.
This is different than usual.
Those are the ones that have to be completed prior to issuance of a building permit. So this, this could just be thirteen.
Oh.
Thirteen, okay.
Yeah, just tack it on as thirteen.
Okay.
This is not related to building permit.
Yeah.
New condition number thirteen, um, which will be in addition to being a condition. It, it will also be a note, a new note on the plan.
Mm-hmm.
And, here's what I have. Um, road association will be required to ensure snowbanks within the town right of way of Jenny Drive and the proposed easement area shall be such that snowbanks don't enter the swale and water entering the swale is not impeded. I don't like that at all.
I, I think I have some of it written, very similar, but coming up on where yours is. Within the right of way and the town easement area shall be such that the banks do not cause runoff onto Jenny Drive.
Okay, I like that better.
And prohibit water from en-
Thanks.
Yeah.
Or prohibit water from entering the road swale.
Nice.
Yeah, I think that captures it.
All right. All right, I did not write that down and I have to read it, so I'm gonna have to, you're gonna have to say that again, but less fast, okay. Shall be such that.
Have to, uh, shall be such that banks do not cause runoff
Okay, hold on.
Onto Jenny Drive or prohibit water from entering the road swale.
Not enough, one night period. Runoff onto Jenny Drive, okay.
Or prohibit water from entering the road swale, like those.
And, or, that it be prohibited. After a word prohibit, say it again, I'm sorry, I'm.
Water from entering the road swale.
Okay. Okay. Just imagine it's grammatically correct, okay?
Yeah, I can clean it up there, as long as we have the correct intent of the board.
Okay. Okay. All right, so.
Add the twos and the thos.
When I, when I make this motion, I can say.
I'll just say one through.
One through ten is drafted, actually, one through.
That's actually one, one through twelve.
Twelve is drafted, including the pace, but then I'll.
Yeah. Plus your, plus your number thirteen.
And then I'll add the lucky thirteen, okay.
Yeah.
All right, ready.
Oh, can I make one amendment?
Sure.
I apologize, it's my error in putting it together. I think thirteen is actually gonna be the conditions related to the building permit. So it would be thirteen, A, B, C, D.
Oh. Okay, or actually, will that be fourteen?
So I would. So I would make yours, sorry, it's A, B, C, D, E, and I would make yours fourteen.
Okay.
I forgot the number, the building, building permit ones, um.
Yeah.
Okay, thirteen, okay.
Fix that before we get too, too far.
One through fourteen, okay. Okay.
Perfect.
All right, here we go. I move to approve the application by McDonald Brothers Custom Builders LLC represented by DM Roma Consulting Engineers for final plan review of a proposal to create an additional three lots in the Campbell Acre subdivision on the seven point one two plus or minus parcel off Jenny Drive, map fifty-six, lot seventeen dash twenty-eight dash zero-three in the Rural Residential and Agricultural Zoning District. The proposal is subject to major subdivision review. Approval shall include conditions one through thirteen in the planner's memo. Including twelve, which is listed therein as a placeholder, shall be one of the conditions and including a new condition, number fourteen, which, in addition to being a condition, shall be noted on the plan. Condition fourteen, noted on the plan. Road association shall ensure snow plowing in the town right of way of Jenny Drive and the proposed easement area is done in a way so that the snowbanks do not cause runoff to freeze on Jenny Drive by ensuring water enters the swale and is not impeded in any way from the drainage systems.
That works. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
A point of order, just.
Uh.
It might be a good idea to include the date of the planner's memo.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think you have to redo it, but I'll just say of January fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, yeah. We, we do usually reference, like, in the, this evening's planner's memo or whatever.
Okay. Okay, okay.
Just to, just to nail that.
Can we just imagine that I said it that way?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Please don't make me do that again.
Thank you.
All in favor? It's four or nothing. You're done.
Thank you.
You're halfway done. Welcome back.
Thank you.
All right, uh.
Can we take a minute? Cause I'm still having some technical difficulties connecting, like, I'm not sure. If I can actually resolve it by going back to talk.
This is the first time using Teams, so I'm gonna bear with this a little bit, but I think.
Well, I don't think I've got a connection at all to the.
Oh, to the what?
Usually just goes to a, a red, solid red. I don't think.
Yeah, that's what you sound like, just, like, and then you come out and it goes red.
Yeah. So I've clicked on it several times. I don't wanna click on it.
May I, can you start pushing?
Is one in there when you do it?
Yep.
Magic. I'm gonna check the settings for devices and creatures. And it shows clickable, so.
That's what I was supposed to.
So it sees me right there.
Yes, I know.
We tabled this as well?
We did table it, so we'll need to take it off the table.
Can we just find out if it's working?
It seems that it's correcting.
Okay, and then you touch that, something, you know.
Come into my, uh, it must be the. I'm looking for it and. Am I depressing it wrong or not?
We don't have Kyle here tonight, so try, try pulling it out and plug it back in, I don't know. But, these guys are, he's got the computer, I think, that might need to choose yours.
I mean, I have a flash drive to just.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Sorry. Oh, I guess I'll just get us started while you're waiting.
Okay, go for it.
We can still talk. At least do that part. Um, okay, this is an amendment, uh, Aries State's Amendment to Eagles Ridge subdivision preliminary plan review. This, I'm just gonna continue so we can get started. This is a request by Sebago Realty LLC represented by DH Roma Consulting Engineers for a preliminary review of a proposal to create a fourteen lot residential open space subdivision on the forty-one plus or minus acre parcel off Eagles Nest Road at tax map sixty-three, lot thirty-five dash twenty-four on the remaining land in the Eagles Ridge subdivision in a rural residential and agricultural zoning district. The proposal is subject to major subdivision plan review. Uh, this was previously tabled, so if someone would make a motion to take it off the table.
I move we take the Aries State's Amendment Eagles Ridge subdivision preliminary plan review off the table.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? It's four or nothing, so we're ready to go and the technical difficulties are resolved at the podium.
I mean, we can talk.
Okay.
Again, my name is JP Conley. I work for DM Roma Consulting Engineers. Uh, I'm here representing, uh, Sebago Realty for Aries State's, or second amended subdivision. When we last left, we had a couple of items we were tasked to address. Um, and so we have revised the open space layout of the project and, uh, incorporated two, um, flat level areas for, like, community, um, access, um, gathering spaces uh, at the, um, at the closer end to Eagles Ridge, um, and then one at the very end of the subdivision. Um, in addition to that, we, we have, um, we, we reached out to a subconsultant to provide a hydro geoassessment, um, and we have that report. Um, we've provided that this week and we got that over to you guys as well. I think they were delivered this evening. Um, so, uh, we also looked at the configuration of lots, especially one and eight. And we've changed those configurations to be more of a standard rectangular shape. And I'd love to show you those.
We have, you should have them.
Yeah, we can, because of the copies.
You can describe them if you want. We've got them here, so.
They're not, um, so lot eight is, is not a triangle anymore. It's a, a, a rectangle. Um, and lot one, the dog leg that carried up the hill, um, at the rear of the lot has been squared off and is no longer an odd-shaped lot.
Okay, and I, while I'm looking in that area, I know you mentioned that you adjusted the end of the road by the fifteen degrees.
Yes, thank you. Um, so.
So, I'm just looking at the drawing. It looks like it's still facing directly toward the building across the street.
It, it does face towards the building, but it gets, it aims more towards the garage rather than the, um, uh, the living room, which is on the, the west side of the, the building.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we did our best to adjust that as, to, to provide the, the less visual impact from headlights going into the building, um, and they, yeah, it's fifteen degrees is the max we're allowed to do with the town. And, um, and we tried our best to get it as far down away from them, but, um, uh, I will say do this alignment mimics a previously approved alignment for what was, uh, a long time ago planned. Um, so, and we've also reached out to the, the butter and are willing to do additional work for him if necessary. My work, I mean, uh, treat, like.
Treat, yeah. I mean, it looks to me like some buffering would be. I mean, obviously, we can't require that you put it on his property, but I would think that they might want some and it seems reasonable that we would requ- require you to do that if he wants it.
Would you willing to work with him? Um, I will say that in the two times that I've met with him since the sidewalk, um, he had concerns with putting trees in his driveway because of where he maintains his snow. Um, I don't know if you guys remember, he has a horseshoe shaped driveway with a, you know, a le- a flag leg that goes up to his garage as well as, um, a little turnout parking area, um, where he plows snow, which would be the most ideal place to put trees. Um, so, right in that location, there are two really substantial oak trees, um, I'd say thirty-plus by inch diameter trees.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, between that and then I suggested maybe putting one or two at the end of the parking area. Um, he didn't really like that idea because that's where he puts his snow.
Yeah.
Um, so, um, we, we told him that we would work our best and, and hopefully the town would agree to allow us to, uh, realign the road. And, um, and we're still willing to provide landscaping if necessary.
Okay, um, why don't we walk through some of the town staff comments? There's a couple of things in there. So, I know you made a number of adjustments to the open space. Do you wanna skip over that now, hoping that you get your view back, or do you wanna describe that to everyone?
I can, I can probably describe it.
Okay.
We can just.
So I guess, I mean, the question is, do we think it's an acceptable solution?
This is the way we have to go into it is.
With what they've done, so.
Have to go into the files and, oh, G E F C file and.
It is, so they've got that open space and then.
We manage what we got. They've got a plan. Thank you. I appreciate your effort.
Yeah.
Um, let's, so, um, the open space really is, is, the, the bulk of the open space is to the, uh, east of the site. Um, and what we've done is, um, so with the reconfiguration of lot eight, uh, we brought the, the open space further into the site along that area. And within that open space, we'll have a stormwater pond and, uh, a community gathering area. Um, that area is also accessible to the proposed trail. That area is also accessible to the proposed trail alignment that we've shown, um, which would access the upland area further east. The open space directly adjacent to that across the street, um, has gotten a little larger, um, mostly due to the reconfiguration of Lot one. We also added a continuous, uh, loop of open space around Lot fourteen. What that will do is provide access to the abutting open space of, um, Eagles Ridge subdivision, um, as well as any future ones to the south and east of the project that may be constructed. And we also added two legs of open space from the edge of the road to access all of them, so they're continuous. Yeah, and in addition to that, there is a small area, um, at the end of the road, um, where there is a community gathering space allocated as well. Um, it should be mentioned that in, in doing so, we've, we've adjusted the, uh, project stormwater design so that there's only one pond at the end of the road. There's a pond that will be on the right side as you're looking going up the road, so further on the east rather than, and we've eliminated the one that was, uh, adjacent to Lot seven. And Lot fourteen, um, we've reconfigured where that building envelope would be, and we've showed it further into the site within it was before. And in reality, what will happen in there is that, uh, depending on where the lot gets built, they will have to, um, construct stormwater, dependent upon how big they get with their development and where it goes. So, that will be a condition of, uh, Lot fourteen's, um, building permit.
So, while we're talking about the open space, are board members happy with that solution? That they've arrived at?
I, I just wanna say I really like the way that you've provided the perimeter access so the open space connects to other open space. I think that even though we didn't have the opportunity to meet with our open space committee, I think that's hopefully the direction that we wanna be going as a town, at least it feels right to me, um, from what I know is we want open spaces to be connected to each other. So, that, that looks good, and were there, was there going to be a picnic table or something in one of the flat open spaces? Is that a, um, requirement or? No, but just possible because it's flat.
The HOA would have the option of, is doing whatever they really want within that area, as long as it's on a structure.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay, cool, that's good, alright, yeah.
And to that point about the contiguous nature of the open space, we had previously provided anisement at the bottom of the lot, so that there would be a connection there, but it really, it doesn't inhibit Lot fourteen's development, so we, we thought that, um, just reducing the size of the lot and, um, just making a boundary perimeter, open space area, uh, would effectively, uh, would more effectively address some of the concerns we heard.
Camera?
I was comfortable with it as well, thank you.
Okay, Genya? Yeah, I think, um, I think it works. I guess the one thing I will say is I have the same comment on this as almost every other open space plan that we see, and I commend you for your creativity, um, as an engineer, a design engineer, but we often see open space, so I'm talking about parcel A, which is steep slopes and surrounded by, uh, wetlands and, um, yes, that has value as open space, certainly, and I guess what my, uh, issue is, is that, um, the town is granting density incentives to, uh, developers in exchange for that open space, which is not really developable in anyways, and I say this every time, so I'm saying it once more. I don't think that really meets the intent of what the ordinance was after, because we shouldn't be granting, uh, bonuses to developers to preserve something that wouldn't have been developed anyways. But JP did his job and he did a good job at it, so I can't fault him for that, um.
If I can, you'll be happy to know that, that they're grappling with that issue now.
Great.
I will also say, I, I'm trying to pull up the numbers too, if you don't mind, but, um, uh, we've, we're significantly exceeding the amount of open space that's required on this project. Just get this thing to, to tell you precisely where we're at.
That's fine, you, we're all happy that you did your job, so.
Yeah, there's never been a question on the amount.
Yeah.
It's more the quality and locations.
Yeah. Okay, I'm gonna, uh, keep moving. There are a couple other staff comments, JP around. Um, so one was around what you guys did for the boundary survey and whether that's acceptable, um, so I guess we can talk about that.
Sure. Um, the boundary survey was prepared by Bill Shippen and it, it describes just our lot. Typically, we wouldn't have gone to that exercise, we would have just used the amended sub, or the original subdivisions, subdivision boundary. But we chose to do that in this case more for construction purposes. The old boundary survey was on, uh, a magnetic bearing, um, coordinate system, and we're, we're now using a, a, the G I S coordinate system, uh, main state plane coordinate system. So that would allow contractors and other people out there to locate things based on GPS, um, modules without having to do any calculations. The boundary survey, as I was told by the surveyor, um, is, it's a signed stamped boundary survey. It's, um, it meets the certifications that all, of, of, of the, the main, um, surveyors' board, uh, requirements and, um, there's no reason it wouldn't hold up as a, um, actual, um, recorded boundary for the project.
Yes, so I wasn't following. Kristin, why the town was proposing a peer review on that?
This was something that I think it had jumped out at, at Doug. Typically, a boundary survey will say standard boundary survey, which this does not say. Um, this one notes that it's a retracement of a couple of the sheets of the twenty thirteen Eagles Ridge subdivision plans. So those, I don't believe were submitted to us, the, the ones you were referencing that were still in magnetic bearing. That we're, we're just trying to do our due diligence as a town, we don't wanna approve something where there's a question about the lines. So, um, we understand that they update to, to GPS for magnetic, we just had some concerns with the language and we're not surveyors and we don't know if there's any issue or if there's no issue, um, so that we just wanted to raise that for the board to consider, um, if it's something where you feel, you would like to have a peer review to be super sure, if you're comfortable with what you've been given, if you wanna see the addition of the magnetic one from Eagles Ridge original, uh, those.
I guess it's more about who did it, not whether it's magnetic or GPS, because surveyors do GPS work all the time.
Right, but surveyors can do different types of surveys.
Right.
So that, that's more the question, so we're not questioning whether or not you're legit surveyor.
Yeah.
We certainly, we certainly have that, and like you said, it's signed and stamped. It's more the, the idea that it's, it's shown as a boundary survey, that's a retracement. So we just had some concerns about the, about the language, when we typically see one that says, um, standard boundary survey that says the surveyor's gone out, uh, in the field and confirmed everything on, on the ground.
Yeah.
Um, so we just had some concerns that we wanted to flag for you as a board.
I'll start with the easy path, which is asking you if you have a problem with us requiring a peer review on that point.
Um, no, I, I don't really oppose it, I, um, it, it, it's not necessary though, um, and let me read the certification on here. Yeah. We can do that, we can have a, have the, um, title of the, the, the project or the, the survey sheet changed. So it does say that, uh, pardon me. I'll read the certification to you, just so you're aware of. I certify that the survey confirms to the standards of the main board of licensure for professional land surveyors and is correct to the best of my knowledge, information and belief. So.
And he's a licensed surveyor?
Yeah, so, but we, we will have.
So, does that take care of the town's concerns if they retitle that document? Or no, or do you not?
I think part of the concern is the, is the retracement, and again, just questioning, we, we like to see that it's a standard boundary survey with language that says it's been confirmed on the ground.
I think he's offering to do that, I think, I think you're offering to reissue that document.
Yep.
I mean, it's, it's still a retracement though, if it, I guess that's where the language comes in, and again, I, I can't speak to that directly. I know it was something that flagged for, for Doug because he's been doing this for a long time and has seen some of these come through where they're kind of signed off on, but maybe not as thorough as we would like them to be as a town, so. Yeah, he has had some questions about that before, um, so he just wanted to confirm that this language was not an issue, again, we don't.
Well.
No one way or another.
I think we could also.
So I think we're, my guess is, I was gonna say, my guess is, there's a few other open things, and my guess is you're not gonna get to a approval tonight anyways. So, can we, um, get this addressed with either, I mean, they've said they would reissue the document as a standard boundary survey.
Yeah, I mean, if.
You can check with Doug if that works.
If your council was saying leave it to staff to con, to follow up with them to, to get someone more comfortable with that.
I mean, I am personally, I don't know. Like, I don't, if, if staff is concerned about it, I don't wanna ignore that. But it sounds like what they're offering fixes it, but I, we can't speak for Doug, so.
Right.
We could also offer the, when, when, with our final submission, um, cement the entire parent parcel that was included with the original boundary survey. Um, it's in town records and we have it too, so, um.
I mean, I would say on this one, we can leave it for you to work with staff to their satisfaction. I think that works for the board. The next one was the, um, so the D E P topic about, um, require, that we should basically require a letter from them confirming that the applicability of this is a, um, uh, yeah, the slot is not applicable, any issue with that?
I, yes, quite frankly, um, we do have a permit by rule issued from them for this project specifically.
Mm-hmm.
In our permit by rule application, we detailed out that this is part of a, um, previous project. I reached out to the D E P, I did not speak to the actual plan reviewer, but I was told by the on staff, uh, or on call staff, a reviewer, that, um, they wouldn't have issued a P B R if they had any concern with it being a common scheme of development. That was one of the first things they probably would look at on this project. So I, I don't think there's any issue at all with that, so, um, but, uh, we could get a letter or something from the D E P, I don't think that would be an issue, um, but it, it, it's been covered.
So, I guess I'll ask Kristin, um, where that came from, if they've got their permit by rule.
Uh, again, this is something that is kind of, uh, just kind of double checking cover for the town. Um, we, this one is a little bit unique in that it is a phase two of an existing subdivision, um, but we, we are not reviewing it as common scheme due to the fact that it's a different developer, um, they don't have rights to the other piece at all anyway, they only have the remaining land. It will have a different HOA, it'll have its own road, et cetera. Were we doing it as a town, as an amendment to an approved, because it's remaining land on a signed plan, but not as necessarily a straight up phase two for most aspects, because it's not the same developer coming back and finishing a project. Um, so it's kind of in this, kind of in a, in a limbo sort of land, and that's gonna come up again in a following question regarding the permit offer.
Yeah, well, it's come, exactly, right.
Um, it's a little bit kind of how you guys wanna interpret it, but the D E P, uh, review is totally separate. Um, and we just, we're looking for something on point, just to say like, hey, this definitely doesn't trigger slow to, you're all good, um, or it does, and we need to have that. We, right now, we just, we don't have that, I understand what JP is saying, that, and we do have a copy of that, uh, P B R, that they've been very upfront about what they're doing and that it's, you know, different developer and so on, everything's separate, um, we're just looking for something on point to make sure the town is comfortable with giving approval to this, knowing that the D E P is not requiring that, that we have something that says straight up from D E P, we are not requiring that. That would make us feel more comfortable, um, but I, I certainly understand what he's saying, uh, that they spoke in with them and they said, they've said they wouldn't do, uh, P B R, without having considered that, we just were looking for something like inviting about that, or something to confirm with the town.
Yeah. Okay, so applicant thinks they're covered, the town would like a second level of letter, what, what say you?
I, I mean, an email from the D E P doesn't seem like a big heavy lift, we're not asking for anything real, I mean, it seems like that, that's their opinion, they would issue that, that, that should suffice, right? Emails have?
Yes.
They're written.
Sounds like we'd like to see a confirmation at the town staff request. So, and then as, uh, Kristin indicated, um, the buffer, this kinda comes up again, cause it's like really a separate project, it's, to me, it seems like a separate project, like it's not a phase two in the sense of what we typically think about it, and like Kristin said, we've got separate HOAs, they don't have access to each other's open space, I mean, it feels like a separate project to me, which it would seem to me that it would trigger the thirty foot perimeter, but that's my initial take on it and opened the hearing why that's not right, or why you don't agree with it, if you don't.
Well, we, we came in with that intent, um, initially, and, and we're told that this is actually an amended subdivision plan. So since it is an amended subdivision plan, it's taking into account the entire project site, as, as far as I consent, um, I understand. The buffer, um, doesn't exist on the opposite lots, um, and as, as they envisioned, I've got, they, I think they envisioned this as a second phase to their project. We provide the buffer, or the perimeter buffer around every other element of the project, with the exception of the shared boundary between our project and the existing, um, Eagles Ridge. However, um, whether the, the property limits, whether they're up to the boundary or not, we still have that buffer. The tree line is well within the property, it's well, we're well beyond the thirty feet, um, and, uh, it helped us with the shapes of the lots.
So, fair enough, thank you for reminding me, this is an amendment. That's how it's in front of us as, as an amendment, even though it does feel like a different project to me.
Yeah, that's a, it was a process question early on, because it's shown as remaining land on a signed and approved subdivision plan.
Yeah.
That it would go through as an amendment, but again, it's, there are other differences to it. And I guess I.
Anyone care to, uh, opine on that?
Sure. I guess for me, when I read through this again, um, it feels awkward to, on one hand, have the, it, it just feels like they're asking, you're, you're looking at it in two, in, in the way that looks most favorable for you based on, on what you're trying to do, so like, I, I mean, it's just kind of how it's.
Sure.
Yeah, and so, you know, for D E P, okay, you don't wanna, not needing slow to, you know, because this is separate, but then this is considered combined, so we don't need the thirty foot buffer, so I think, given that the thirty foot buffer was your intent anyway and the trees are there, like, it just feels like it should be required, and we should look at it as separate.
Genya, Melinda? That's what I was struggling with, it's like, which way is it, one way or the other, or both?
Right, right. Right. So just to, just to be clear, there is no plan to clear in the perimeter. You've just let the lot line go there without showing a buffer.
Correct.
And so it really wouldn't change the way that this gets developed if you add the buffer back in.
That's correct.
Um, and given that, I, I mean, anything that helps protect against things being cleared, um, in favor of in general, especially where there's such dense development here. There's great open space, although it's not usable, um, in many ways, it's still good, wetlands are good. It's still good, wetlands are good, still good. I, I, I think we should add the, ask them to add that buffer back.
I mean, it's not infringing your building envelopes or anything, is it?
So, I think it might as well.
Right.
To, to stay consistent with the approach of it being sort of separate.
Does, can I ask a point?
Sure.
Question, does it impact the size of lot one? Because he, he had taken kind of the flag end off of lot one, um, to bring it more into compliance with shape. But I don't, you might need to add some of that back, I'd imagine, if you're putting in a.
Correct.
Buffer, yeah.
Yeah.
So as long as, as long as the board is aware of that, that that shape might change again from being kind of the nice rectangle to having a little bit of a bump out again to get enough, um, square footage for that lot, uh, which you didn't seem to have too much of an issue with before anyway, but just like, no pun intended.
Okay, um, so I think we covered those points, I skipped around a little bit, so.
Can we just, just.
Sure, yeah, yeah, go for it.
Can we write that one more time? So, um, so it'd be very easy to do that for lots two through seven. If, if you would prefer, um, to have just avoided on lot one, it's only a small portion of that lot, and that would allow lot one to stay as a rectangular shape.
Oh, yeah, because it's part of the common open space.
So we would only have a sixty-two point two-foot portion of lot one that would not have that perimeter boundary, but that would allow you to kind of keep the lot the shape you wanted it. So it, it, it's just an option, it's not, not a direction or a request. It's, um, if you'd like the lot shaped as they are, um, you know, we can do that on, we can accommodate on two through seven, and, you know, whatever you guys would like us to do for lot one, we're okay with.
I've, I don't have a preference, it doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, I think, I think that plan for lot one is fine 'cause the most part of the back of lot one actually connects to the open space anyway.
Yeah.
I think that's making the adjustment, so one stays more similar to what it is now, seems reasonable.
So sixty-one point two-one feet of perimeter buffer?
Yeah.
Sounds good to me. Okay, so I just wanna make sure we covered everything. So boundary survey, applicant and staff are gonna work together to either accept a newly reissued document or, uh, or it will be a peer review. I'm gonna skip number two for now. Open space, uh, we're in agreement that it meets the requirements, yes, we covered that. Four, um, so we support the realignment, um, I guess however, um, I feel like it needs some, I mean, we don't know what the neighbor may or may not want, but when I see it, it looks like there should be some provision in there for plantings or fence if the neighbor is wanting something like that.
I can, I can follow up with the neighbor directly if you'd like. And I know JP's already spoken with him several times, but if you want the town to reach out as well.
Yeah, maybe that would be good and just let him know that the board is inquiring what. So the road's been realigned and the board is inquiring if that's satisfactory or if he has requests for like additional buffering.
That you support additional buffering if he wants it?
We would support some type of additional buffering.
Okay.
If he wants it, and if we don't hear back, we're not gonna require anything.
Okay.
Reshaping of lots one and eight, I think we're good with that, right? So we are gonna ask for a written confirmation regarding the applicability of sloteau from D E P. And we covered the thirty-foot perimeter buffer that will be included and partially included on lot one. So then back to number two, which is, um, whether preliminary approval is appropriate at this time. And town staff wasn't thinking it was, and it seems like a lot of conditions to me to still be wrapped up.
Could I speak to this one point?
Sure, yeah.
Just to clarify something with the applicant, I, um, and this was something that Doug had raised as well, was the, we have the nitrate study from mainland, but it, I'm unclear, and he was not viewing this as being a hydro geological study in full, like there wasn't a, like a map with it.
Maps are usually, uh, uh, something that's just done for visual things. The, the study's on, it's been completed, um, it, it's in line with what we discussed. But the largest plume is forty-eight feet. And, uh, so we're not gonna have any drinking water well issues. We're not poisoning ourselves and we won't be, um, none of the well locate, or the septic locations are close enough to the boundary that they'll extend over the property boundaries. So, um, we leave that's addressed.
So he, he was looking for something on point in here that states that the proposed locations of the wells as interacting with the proposed locations of the leach field don't cause any concern for contamination. And it looks like what we're, what we're seeing for language in here is related to the, the ten milligrams of the, um, project boundary. So that was, that was the piece that, that he was flagging. And we can certainly, if, if you're not looking at preliminary tonight, anyway, we can certainly follow up with the applicant on that. But I just, I just wanted some clarity on what, you're viewing this as being the hydro and the nitrate altogether. So I think if, if that's something, if you're not moving tonight, we don't need to spend time on that tonight. We can work on that with the applicant, just to make sure we're clear on.
Yep.
On what's submitted and making sure it meets what we need.
I think that's where we're moving.
Okay.
Unless someone's feeling like they wanted to make a motion for preliminary approval.
Mr. Chair, is it possible at the next time we come back, if they've met all of the conditions, that we skip over preliminary and go right to final? If they've achieved everything needed for final?
You can, you can do both.
We could do both, they can't skip it, but we could, yeah.
Okay. Uh, right. If, if they've met everything, so wouldn't. Even if we granted preliminary, they're not done anyway, they're gonna have to come back, so, okay. Yeah, I wouldn't be inclined to.
Okay, you got a few pieces of homework, um, anything else?
Not for me.
Need anything from us?
Uh, no, I think you've given us all the direction we need.
All right, so, uh, next time we might be able to do both, if everything goes.
I appreciate that.
Yeah. Okay, um, I think that's it then. So I guess we should table this one again, or just leave it open? I guess we can leave it on the table, right? I don't know.
Yeah, that's up to you, I don't think. We're expected to come back pretty soon, so I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. We'll see when you come, when you're ready to come back.
You got it.
All right, uh, that's all we got on our agenda.
Thank you very much.
Well, I'm making a motion to adjourn.
All right, is there a second? All in favor? All right, we are out of here at eight seventeen.